We'll call this meeting of the Oceanside City Council order and start with a roll call, please.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Feller.
Here.
Councilmember Kine.
Here.
Councilmember Rodriguez.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
If you would join me in the pledge of allegiance, please.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation under God, indivisible, and free of justice.
Mr. Mullen.
Thank you. The council met in closed session at 3:30 to discuss the following items. Item one, conference with labor negotiator involving the status of negotiations with the Oceanside Police Officers Association, the OPOA non sworn, and the management employees of the city of Oceanside. There's no action under the Brown Act on item one. Item two, council met on existing litigation in the workers' compensation matter of William Cogerman versus City of Oceanside. Again, there was a meeting and direction provided, but nothing to report at this time under the Brown Act. There was no meeting on item two B, the significant claim that will be continued to May 6th. Item three, conference with real property negotiator involving the three parcels of land located at the southwest corner of Apple Street and Greenbrier Drive. Negotiating parties, City of Oceanside and National Core. Under negotiations are the price and terms for the acquisition of the property. Item three B, conference with real property negotiator involving the portion of the city operations center located at 4925 Oceanside Boulevard. Under negotiations are the price and terms for the lease of the real property with the Hobie Cat Company. With respect to both items, the council heard both, provided direction on terms, but there's no reportable action under the Brown Act.
Thank you. With that, we'll go to our consent calendar, which are items five through 15. And Mr. Navarro, I understand we have some public on?
We have public on items seven, eight, nine, and 10.
For balance.
Well, let's just do the balance in. There's a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Are those all together, or were they?
They're all together, same comment for all items. On items numbers seven, eight, nine, and 10, our only speaker is Nadine Scott. I object to the funding of items seven, eight, nine, and 10 at this time of emergency. Funds should be conservatively retained until a new budget, no doubt adjusted downward, is reviewed, available to the public for comment, and approved. No optional expenditures should be made unless there is a critical need. Nadine Scott, Oceanside. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Kine.
Could we just take a second for staff to explain some of the expenses and maybe why they need to be done now?
Mayor and councilmembers, I do have our fleet manager, our public works director, and our finance director here to address the concerns that were raised.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, councilmembers. Jeff Freehart, fleet manager, City of Oceanside. We have specifically set up a replacement fund years and years ago strictly for replacing of vehicles. The vehicles that are on this list are all either extremely old, have completely outlived their usefulness, or in regards to the four-year one that you see with the lifeguard unit, those generally don't get more than three, maybe four years because of their work environment due to living on the beach. So, the fourth one is an adjustment to a PO from two fiscal years ago for brand-new police vehicles that Ford decided to redesign in 2020, and they raised the price, which went outside the scope of our PO. So, in order to maintain it, we had to raise it.
I just wanted to go over a little bit about the fleet fund. The fleet fund is an internal service fund in that it accumulates funds by department, by vehicle, so that you're not paying for a whole vehicle in one year. So, as the life of the vehicle, it's like a depreciation, it's accumulated. And it's worked very well for us, and I find it to be fiscally sound in that we have a plan, and so that every time a car comes, a vehicle comes up for replacement, we have the funds available. And that's why it was set up that way. And there's a couple different ways you can do it. But we've been known to be, the way we handle our fleet, you've gotten awards for the best fleet because of the way that it is handled, and we never get into a situation where we don't have funds to replace needed vehicles. On the other hand as well, we have looked at it when certain years when the internal service fund was going to be too great, let's say for police, we've asked police to use their vehicles a couple more years to help us. So, it's a very important fund that needs to stay intact.
Anything else?
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. No more questions. Thank you. I did want to say that I did get a chance to speak with Ms. Scott about her email to us, and she had actually had considered what we had done in the recession. That was one of the things that we cut down on because, you know, she's anticipating that we are going to be having a shortfall, and so she wanted basically for us to consider this as part of the budget process. But because these are critical needs, and that is how I'm interpreting from staff, that this is a critical need at this time, I think she understands that. So, I'm going to support the motion for approval. Thank you.
Councilmember Kine.
I'll be brief. I thought it was just important to address the fact that we are looking at every possible way to cut and save money right now, and if it's prudent, we're going to do it. I know that's top of everyone's mind when we're bringing things forward, so I appreciate that due diligence.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
With that, we'll go to item 16, which is a report on the COVID-19 state of emergency.
So, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, Deanna Larson, City Manager, I did prepare a PowerPoint for today's presentation to give an update on our COVID-19.
Do you have a copy of the?
I apologize, I did not print a copy out. I will make sure we do that in the future.
Could you do it next time? Yes, please. Thank you.
Yes, my apologies. So, on February 14th, the county public health, the county declared a public health emergency and a local emergency. That was February 14th of 2020. A state emergency was proclaimed on March 2nd of 2020. And then the county emergency operations center is operating at level one. A local emergency was proclaimed on March 16th of 2020, ratified by the city council on March 18th, 2020. And the city emergency operations center is operating at level two, mostly in a virtual status, by phone call and conference call. We are holding daily directors or emergency operations center conference calls on alternating days to coordinate our response. In terms of local cases, as of yesterday's report, there were 51, excuse me, 53 positive cases in Oceanside. That comes to one positive case per 3,359 residents, or a rate of .03% of the population. It compares to a countywide average of one per 1,377 residents, which is a .07% rate. And as you can see on the chart shown below, Oceanside is very near the bottom on a per-capita basis. The median number would be roughly between where the La Mesa and Lemongrove bars are, so Oceanside is very well below the average. And then Tri-City Medical Center, in their update dated April 20th, noted that they've had 20 total positive cases to date, one current inpatient, and 19 outpatient cases or discharged inpatient cases. And this map, as well as the chart that you just saw, are available on our website. This map shows the number by ZIP code, and as you can tell, it's pretty well distributed throughout the city. We've not been notified of any congregate facilities or concentrations within the city of Oceanside. Terms of communications, we've made 100, excuse me, 402 COVID-19 posts across five social media platforms since early February. We've released 28 news releases. We do daily updates of our city webpages, and we've had almost 78,000 visits since the 1st of March to those specific webpages. We've also produced three city-specific videos, and we provide a screenshot of our city COVID information page on the website. There's a lot of information reports available there, as well as a screenshot of one of our social media posts. In terms of department updates, of COVID-19 potential illness among city employees, there have been 15 total potential cases. 14 of those have been screened by our designated infection control officer, Lynn C. Blune, RN, and one was screened by their personal physician. Of those, eight were tested. There have been six negative and two positive cases. There are three staff currently off duty, and 13 have been cleared to return to work. In the last two weeks, which was April 5th to April 18th, OPD reported 182 COVID-related calls out of 3,751 total calls in that timeframe. And the fire department has had 77 suspected and three confirmed COVID calls. In terms of personal protective equipment, all public safety are following protocols, and we have sufficient PPE on hand. Additional department updates, our staff have been advocating to make sure we're adequately serving our community. Our building official was instrumental in advocating for the publishing entities for mechanical and plumbing standard codes to provide free online access to those codes during this emergency. That's something that normally people have to pay to subscribe to. As well as our Oceanside, Green Oceanside team advocated strongly with waste management to divert our recyclables to the Edco recycling facility once waste management closed theirs. That is diverting 1,700 tons a month from the landfill and saves on landfill costs. And we are, as far as we know, the first that have been successful in making that happen. In addition, we started talking about recovery planning at a staff level as soon as we were preparing to declare the disaster, and we are looking at economic recovery of the community, social behavioral community recovery, our city fiscal recovery, as well as long-term resiliency. And so, staff, the staff team that is working on that is preparing a draft plan for internal review. In terms of harbor and beaches, the county health order prohibits swimming, surfing, paddleboarding, boating for recreational purposes, and all other water recreational activities. The beaches, which that would be the sand, not the water, is at local discretion if social distancing can be maintained. However, Oceanside also does not want to be the only beach open and become the target for every person who wants to visit the beach in Southern California or in San Diego County. And so, we did close access to our beaches at the same time that the state beaches were closed about three weeks ago. We are coordinating with the other San Diego County coastal cities and the state parks for a phased reopening of beaches for active use only initially, but we cannot reopen the water for surfing until the county revises their health order. And then yesterday, we did issue new slip renter access guidelines that does allow the slip renters to visit their boats and to hang out on their boats, but they do have to remain, keep their boats in their slips until the county revises the health order. We did receive a few public comments about folks unhappy that they can't spend the night on their boats, and that would be for non-liverboards. And the permit that the staff issues for liverboards does provide for, excuse me, not for liverboards, for slipholders, does provide for exceptions and unforeseeable circumstances. They still do have access to their boats for inspection, repair purposes, or just daytime visits. It's something that we will revisit once we've had a little bit more time now that we've opened them up for daily visits to ensure that we are maintaining social distancing. And with that, Megan is going to talk about homelessness and the COVID emergency.
Before you go, could you address the question about non-liverboards that generally are usually able to sleep three nights a week, and they're not able to right now, and how that's going to be made up?
Right. So, the slipholder permits do not guarantee that there will be access for overnight stays. And so, it's something that we're not allowing right now in the spirit of the stay-at-home order. However, we will reevaluate that with the new regulations that we issued yesterday to ensure that we can maintain social distancing and reconsider that. But at this point, in the spirit of the county health order, we feel like that is not an appropriate activity.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Councilmembers. Megan Crooks with the Neighborhood Services Department. I wanted to give you an update on homelessness in Oceanside during the COVID outbreak. This is a quick photo from one of our posts. This is the bridge housing that we bring homeless into to help assist them in moving towards permanent housing. With the city response to COVID-19 to assist unsheltered homeless persons, it was a multi-department response and continues to be so. The Oceanside Police Department Hot Team is involved heavily out on the streets and working on our team and coordinating efforts. And the Public Works Department has assisted in providing services and equipment needed out in the field. The Housing Department, through our Housing Authority, as well as our homeless management analyst, and the Water Utilities Department, although this is about the homeless, they have been key in helping with the food distribution contract with the Oside Kitchen Collaborative. So, this has been a lot of city efforts put towards homelessness. The services provided, and these are not limited, there are so many more, but these are just some examples of what get provided in the touchpoints when the Hot Team goes out with social workers. Wash stations first were placed out at numerous locations. I think we had eight or nine of them initially near encampments so that the homeless would be able to attend to the handwashing procedures that were enforced by the Health and Human Services Department. And educational materials were placed at those wash stations, as well as distributed by the Hot Team directly to the homeless individuals. Hygiene kits were distributed and continue to be distributed through the Hot Team, and we have requests into the county for additional hygiene kits that include masks, hand sanitizers and things so that they don't have to come up to handwashing stations. Food and hot meals have been distributed to the homeless. Bridge housing is available, and that's a regular program, but we continue to implement that with the number of homeless touches that we've had during COVID. Portable restrooms have been placed. There have been two placed near two main encampments so that homeless, because we have had closure of public spaces that included restrooms, so that we made sure that we provided something there, and that was in coordination through county resources. And then we have referrals to motels that had been secured by the County of San Diego as well. With the homelessness, service providers and outreach workers have been a key partner, as well as the city departments. Interfaith Community Services is our contracted service provider currently. We have two social workers through Interfaith Community Services that work with the Hot Team out in the field, making those touchpoints with the homeless persons. And then we have two social workers that work with the Housing Authority as well. How that works, the social workers in the Hot Team go out and they work with the homeless individuals in trying to see if they can get them to receive services. And once they have established a housing plan with them, then we can work them towards bridge housing. And that's a contract that we also have with Interfaith Community Services that they manage. Then the housing social workers come into place, and they work with the homeless individual to help them look for a rental unit. They help them with the paperwork and the applications, and they also work with them to acquire any other services they need in the meantime. The bridge housing program, we are also looking to expand that. As with all congregate shelters in the county, they had to move some of the homeless individuals out of congregate sheltering, and the location was the San Diego Convention Center so that they could spread, have the proper social distancing within the shelters because the beds were too close together. The same with bridge housing. So, we had 13 beds in the bridge housing. There were other beds that are not part of our program, but all of those units, they had four persons per unit, two bedrooms, two beds in a room, so they had to limit that for the social distancing as well. So, we don't have the 13 beds in that complex, and we still have a need to move homeless from shelters or from the streets into bridge housing. So, we are looking to, we're working on a contract right now to acquire some rooms with a local motel, which will remain undisclosed for the security of the homeless individuals, but that is underway so that we can continue to provide bridge units to those homeless. And we are continuing to use our HEAP funds towards that expense. Brother Benos and Bread of Life in our community, they continue to provide services to the homeless, unsheltered homeless. However, their services have been reduced due to social distancing, so they are providing food distributions and hot meals as well on a daily basis. Brother Benos has a daily sack lunch pickup, and they have a drive-by food distribution that they're coordinating with Feed San Diego. And the Bread of Life has scheduled meal pickups and food distribution pickups. The Oside Kitchen Collaborative is a contract that the city council approved, and I'll go into more detail on that in the next item this evening on food distribution, but they are providing hot meals, and some of those, and they're arranging the distributions, and some of those meals are reaching our homeless population, our unsheltered homeless, and as well as other community members that are more vulnerable. And then, community outreach. We also have, Oceanside Homeless Resource is an active group in the community that are working with our homeless, and a lot of volunteers, just residents in the community, that are actively working to distribute food to the homeless and trying to find out what their needs are. And staff has done some outreach with these groups and these volunteers in trying to close the gaps, in trying to assist them in pointing those homeless individuals in the right direction to ultimately receive services. And we're working with them in a collaborative way, and they are also working with our Hot Team and our social workers in the field in a collaborative way. Homelessness on a bigger picture, the San Diego County and Regional Task Force for Homeless staff are working with both. That's our regional network for working with the homeless. The arrangement of hotel motel sites was done through the San Diego County, and a volume of those were reserved for the county to make placements into, as well as a portion of those went to the Regional Task Force for Homeless. And we are part of the Regional Task Force for Homeless. It's the continuum of care, and we have contract dollars with service providers within that organization. And so, Interfaith Community Services is but one of the service providers that is managing some of those hotel sites. Two of those sites are in Escondido and Carlsbad, and Oceanside Homeless have benefited from being able to access some of those motel rooms. We have had 115 rooms for the North County through Regional Task Force for Homeless, and 38 homeless from Oceanside have accessed those motel rooms for, at one point or another. It doesn't mean that they have remained in those hotel rooms. They may have chosen to leave, which they have the right to do, or they may have been asked to leave due to behavior reasons. When that does occur, they do come back to Oceanside. There is a coordinated effort through our TPH service providers. The regional jurisdictions staff that are working on homeless efforts are speaking daily and coordinating daily. The Hot Teams are coordinating amongst themselves within the jurisdictions in North County, and we are working to find the best practices. And it, in those conversations, we've realized Oceanside's really providing quite a bit of services, considering we don't have a shelter here within our jurisdiction, but we are coordinating with the best resources that we have and taking care of the homeless with the resource, every resource that we can put into play. We have weekly teleconferences and updates with San Diego County Homeless Group, and Regional Task Force for Homeless is part of that as well. So, we get updates on what's available and how to acquire it, and they're asking us what the needs are so that we can inform them, and they can go back into the county and try to formulate a plan for that. So, again, I covered that we're networking coordinated efforts and activities among those jurisdictions. One other item, the State Senate Bill 89, that funding for expansion of sheltering services, that was enacted on March 16th, 2020, and put into play, and it was allocated to large cities, over 500,000 in population. That was the city of San Diego. And then the counties also received a portion, and that was County of San Diego, and then the continuums of care. And for San Diego County, that continuum of care is Regional Task Force for Homelessness. Those jurisdictions all put 100% of their allocations toward the efforts of the convention center down in the city of San Diego. And what that initially did, they were, did a phased process, and they initially started out with that, the movement of homeless persons from congregate shelter areas into the convention center to make sure that they were separated properly for social distancing to control the spread of the virus. And again, the homeless efforts that are being put into play right now during COVID is to mitigate and to try and control the spread of that virus. Beyond that, we're still working with the homeless that still have needs, and we continue to find new resources and new options, daily and weekly, and put those into play as we can. And I'll be here for any questions as well.
So, I prepared a slide here to summarize the criteria that the county of San Diego issued yesterday regarding what they will evaluate in order to ease restrictions here in San Diego County. They've indicated that three of these five have been met so far. The first one is a 14-day downward trajectory in influenza-like illness. The second one is a 14-day downward trajectory of positive cases as a percentage of total cases. And the third one is adequate healthcare capacity, and that is met. Local hospitals are currently at 68%, so there is adequate capacity. The two that still need to be met before the county will take action to relax the standards are a 14-day downward trajectory of COVID-like cases. This has varied and is being monitored daily. We were on a good track, but then there was a one-day uptick, so they are reevaluating that. As well as item five is a robust testing program for at-risk healthcare workers. The county has formed a laboratory task force to look and work on this issue, and they've indicated that the regional capacity for testing is currently 3,400 tests per day. And they have indicated that the reopening will be in phases following And they have indicated that the reopening will be in phases following the county health orders. Once again, this is information that came from the county. I can't speak to it in depth, but we are required to follow the county health orders. And then in terms of fiscal impact, the city has had almost a million dollars of expenses related to COVID to date. They're outlined on this slide. Not all of these costs will be reimbursable from the federal government since they won't cover things like salary costs for salaried employees. So that's really staff that are already being paid for by the city that are instead spending their time on COVID efforts and not doing their regular jobs. We will not be able to recover those costs. But we have submitted expedited reimbursement requests to FEMA for over 700,000 of these costs to date. And we are tracking this on an ongoing basis and we will work to receive as much reimbursement as we can. And so with that, that's the report that I have. I'm here to answer questions as well as I do have other staff here if there are questions.
Mr. Navarro, we have public on this?
We had eight comments that were submitted that were forwarded to council. Of those eight, only two requested that their comments be read into the record. Our first comment is from Joan and John Connolly. The decision on what businesses are considered essential to the local economy should not be made by local jurisdictions. I propose contacting the state for funding to keep critical city operations open. The state has a budget surplus of $21 billion as of January 10th, 2020, reported by the governor's office. Respectfully submitted, John Connolly and Joan Connolly. Our second comment to be read into the record is from Roger Davenport. Loosening restrictions before we have had adequate testing and decreased momentum is as stupid as being in a rainstorm and throwing away your umbrella because you aren't getting wet. Police should record names and addresses of anyone taking part in a quote "freedom" protest to trace later infections. Roger Davenport. That concludes the public comment.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
Thank you very much. First and foremost, staff, thank you guys so much for all your hard work and the long hours. It, it is, you are really serving our city and I just want to thank you for that. You, we see it, we see it in the numbers, we see it in the, the regular updates and thank you guys so much. Both chiefs, thank you guys for everything you're doing. Just want to read this quick excerpt and then I want to make a recommendation for a potential motion. I'm going to hand this out. If you can give one of those to the clerk, please. The French economist and philosopher Frederic Batiat described the economic principle of a cost-benefit analysis in his 1850 essay entitled, What Is Seen and What Is Unseen? The historian Amity Shlaes applies Batiat's principle to the public health response to the coronavirus. For every action we take such as closing businesses, stay-at-home order, the whole closing beaches, whatever, you know, everything that's being done right now, there is the unseen person who loses their job or maybe their business and their livelihood. Oceanside has put forth extraordinary efforts to flatten the curve, but as we push down the curve like a large balloon, a new curve is created. In this case, it is an unemployment and loss of essential revenues curve. And to flatten this curve with the closure of hundreds of small businesses by the county health order and the state's shelter in place orders, we have come remarkably close to comprising, to compromising our constitutional rights as guaranteed in the Bill of Rights. The Bill of Rights limits what the government can do, preserving liberty for the people. Life has not been measured in a zero-sum manner. More than 38,000 people die every year in crashes on US roadways. The US traffic fatality rate is 12.4 deaths per 100,000. We went over some COVID numbers of comparison. An additional 4.4 million are injured seriously enough to require medical attention. We could bring that number close to zero if we mandated that cars be built with one-foot bumpers all around and fitted with a roll bar cage and set maximum speed limits of 40 miles per hour. Risk is inherent in life. We are on a very dangerous pathway if we do not take action. And so I would like to again ask my colleagues to join together and I would like to make a motion in direction to staff to prepare a letter to San Diego County Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health Services Wilma J. Wooten, the public health officer, demanding an amendment to county health orders surrounding COVID-19 to permit local agencies to decide the following. One, opening of outdoor recreational activities including beaches, harbor, parks, and golf courses. Two, opening of businesses essential to the local economy. Three, this is a supplement to items one and two, Oceanside residents and businesses will continue to follow all social distancing and sanitation requirements that essential businesses are currently following for both items one and two. We can continue this model that we're doing with the businesses that the county has deemed essential. We just carry it over to our parks, we carry it over to our beaches, we carry it over to businesses essential to our economy. Four, Oceanside is requesting amendment to take effect immediately, but no later than I would like staff to prepare a letter for council signature to be mailed no later than this Friday, 4/24, and to be emailed promptly.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. Want to go back to the harbor because I had forwarded those emails to you, Ms. City Manager, Ms. Larson, and I actually wanted a response to their specific question. It was much more specific than, oh, we're following the rules. Bottom line is they do have access to their boats. The prohibit, the prohibition is to go in the water and actually sail around even within the harbor. But what about coming into their own boats and spending up to three days a week on the, on their boats?
So, Councilmember, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear in addressing this question earlier. So as you're all aware, the county health order is to stay at home and the county health order has prohibited recreational boating. When that prohibition came out, staff did restrict access to boats for liveaboards as well as to do essential maintenance and inspections only. In evaluating the harbor, staff did loosen those restrictions and we issued that guidance on, yesterday, to allow folks, slipholders to now visit their boats, go ahead and stay on their boats during the daytime, up to four persons, provided that they are following social distancing. We're recommending that they wear masks when they are on the docks and that they not congregate on the docks. Since we just implemented this yesterday, we feel like we need to make sure that we are able to effectively manage the harbor and maintain social distancing before we make another change. And that next step then would be to allow them to do their overnight stays. So we feel like we need to allow this change to go into effect and if we're able to manage things, then we could go to the next step of allowing more overnight stays. And it's again towards making sure that we can manage the harbor in a safe manner in accordance with the county health order.
Yeah, okay. So the very specific question was because they do see folks that have, that are rent, sliprenters, who have the ability to stay overnight three nights a week, see them as a second home. And so their request is basically, if I can't have this, what is the city going to do? Is the city going to allow us some additional time during some period of time to stay overnight? Or is there something going to happen with the lease during this time period? And that was the very specific question.
Right. And so from staff's perspective, the slipholder agreements do allow that they, it's to store their boats in the slips and that access is at the discretion of the harbor and can be modified for unforeseeable conditions. So in this case, we feel like the modifications are in accordance with their slip permits. We haven't modified it in a way that is harmful to them. Certainly, an argument could be made that those are their second homes, but pursuant to the stay-at-home order, folks are supposed to be staying at home. And we certainly could consider it, but at this point, we felt it was prudent to roll back in a measured manner to make sure that we were able to effectively manage the harbor.
Okay. Well, with respect to the beaches then, let's go to that topic. I understand from listening to the conversations and the briefings from the county that we are looking at possibly the date of maybe May 3rd to open up the beaches in terms of pedestrian and I don't know about the water, the water activity. Not sure if that was part of this idea of opening up the beaches at least for pedestrian and access. Can you talk a little bit more about that?
So right now, the county health order does not allow access to the water. So the city has no discretion in whether we can allow surfing at this point. The county would need to modify the self, the order for that to occur. The sand itself is currently under a local discretion. So we could allow access to the sand for active recreation, not for congregations with social distancing in place. However, the concern is that if we are the only beach that is allowing access within San Diego County, we are going to become a magnet for every person who wants to go to the beach and we will have difficulty managing the crowds. And so we've been working with our neighboring coastal cities for a coordinated effort to then reopen access to the beaches in, in order for the water to be-
So that's going on, I know I'm on the clock here, so can you shorten your responses?
Okay, so that is an active discussion. We had a conference call today and the lifeguards all got together to come up with a coordinated plan across all the cities. But it is-
Which would benefit us because otherwise if we're the only ones open, then everybody's going to come here.
Right. But it is, right now, the lifeguard recommendation would be when the water is allowed to have access, we would open the sand at the same time and not prior to that. And there was clear consensus that that not occur until the county modifies their health order.
Okay, thank you. And as to the homeless issues, if I can have Megan come back up, Ms. Crook? Okay. You mentioned that you're in negotiations with a hotel and it started off with just the bridge housing to get some replacement housing because of the congregate, congregate nature of our bridge housing. That was two people per, per room and you can't do that during this time period of the COVID-19. So will we have opportunity to have more rooms, especially with respect to people that are in the queue on our homeless list? And can we use the HEAP money? And I understand there's a deadline for using our HEAP money. How much is it and could that extend to, for May and June?
Councilmember Sanchez, yes, we do have HEAP funds remaining and I, I don't have the exact amount right at this time, but we do have till May 30th on our contract to expend those funds.
And we'd be getting additional funds?
Yes.
We just don't know how much yet.
Right. We also have some of our Measure X funds that are moved towards our bridge funding. So we're using the HEAP first and then we still have budget to pay for bridge housing beyond that.
Can we go directly with the state? The state did the, the contracts with the county for the Room Key program where FEMA pays the 75% and I believe the state is paying the 25%? Is that something that we can do, negotiate directly with the state on if we wanted to do that and have a hotel, you know, pay for some rooms?
It's not, I don't believe it's something to do directly with the state. It's something to do directly with-
With the county?
With the hotel. Or, or we can go through the county with a coordinated plan as well.
Would, if we talked to the hotel and they agreed, would we be able to get our funds reimbursed at least 75% through FEMA?
Through, yes, through their coordinated efforts, but that 25% still needs to be made up.
Get paid? That would be yes?
Yes.
Okay. So how many rooms do you think you'll be able to have above and beyond the, what was it, half of the 13, right? We had 13 rooms for the-
Right.
-bridge housing. We have to split that up because of the congregate nature.
Yes. The contract that we're doing right now is strictly for our bridge housing to expand that because we have homeless that are ready to move into it. We have nowhere to put them. So that, we are looking at the motel. It will provide us 15 rooms. And again, those are, it's transient. So, you know, once we move them into the permanent housing, then it opens up again and we can move more people in. So it's a, it's a fluid process and the whole system really works together.
Okay.
And this is a gap right now.
Well, I'm hoping that we can get more rooms for, because obviously we have, the need is there. And we do need to get as many people off the streets as possible. I did get a chance to read the Room Key sheet that, that talks about, you know, the priorities for this with respect to the state program and FEMA. But thank you very much. I do want to say also that I am very proud of Ocean, what Oceanside has done with the 53 we helped steady the day before yesterday and yesterday. I don't know what our numbers are today. They usually come out a little later. But it's not just about us, it's about the entire county and actually it's all interrelated. We have folks that, once, once everybody goes back to work, it'll be to Los Angeles County, Orange County, Riverside County, San, other parts in San Diego County. So as to the motion that has been made by Councilmember Rodriguez, Councilmember Rodriguez, I do feel that these are, that the decisions have to be based on data and science. This is, we're, we got, we have really good positive results because we, we are sheltering in place. And otherwise, our infrastructure would be severely overloaded, our hospitals, we just would, they were just not built for that kind of, for some, a pandemic. I don't, and I don't know how many pandemics I'm going to have in my lifetime. Certainly, I don't know of anyone, of anyone who has gone through a pandemic. But there are lessons to be learned from the flu, from the flu of 19, is it 18? Thank you. So as to your motion, I think it's, you know, only, only the county, the county health officer is the one that is in charge of our health, of these very critical health issues. And so I cannot support your motion. As much as I want is to go get, get back to work, it has to be at the time when we can ensure the public safety, our public safety, our residents' health and safety. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
Figures. Would you make sure that, I'm sure we'll be here when Mr. Tuck sends out the, the latest update, so.
So Mayor and Council, as you know, I've been sharing you the daily updates and it has come in while we've been in this meeting. So there were three new cases in Oceanside since the report I provided a little earlier tonight and we will forward that report to you.
Thank you. The, my heart and my mind wants to do everything on this list because of the, the needs for this economy. I, I haven't had any of the Kool-Aid out of the county board of supervisors and the public health officer. I don't know science. I, I feel like we're kind of being trapped in our own homes. It saves a lot of money when you're sitting at home and not having to drive your car or like some of us get our hair cut. I'm, I'm probably going to give one of my grandkids an opportunity to cut my hair. The problem with this page is all the cities have to be doing it. And I'm not really sure how this affects how the cities react. I, I, I want to see what everybody else is, I mean, I'm, I would like to see this go forward and, and start demanding things. There's just some senselessness out of what people think is how, how this spreads and, and we're trusting people to stay at home, but people are just wandering through, you know, the big box- know, the big box stores, just looking at things, just to be looking at things, something else to do when they could be out actually swinging a golf club. And nobody's going to get within Peter, six feet of Peter on the golf course, because he, he could put a five iron in their forehead or something. So, besides being contagious, or if he were. There's just so many things wrong with our, losing our freedoms, and, and I'm really puzzled by the scare tactics and, and, you know, listening to the presentations by the county that it must happen, but every place isn't the same. All, all of Orange County beaches are open, and, you know, there's probably some serious parts of their community that aren't, you know, doing very well either. I did have a question for you, Megan. Do I have time? I didn't want to talk at all today, but-
Yes.
So, the, the community groups that are helping homeless, that are just taking them food here and there and putting out their own opportunities for restroom facilities and without the use of the city's resources, those people are, do they have to follow our rules if we are in fact dealing with the homeless in that manner? I'm afraid what, my hat's off to anybody that can, can organize and do that type of thing, but in everything else we do, there has to be a certain way that the city says it can be done to prevent lawsuits and what have you. So, is, is that kind of what I'm-
Deputy Mayor Fowler, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, the folks who are distributing the food are acquiring that through, they are one of the distributors through the Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative. So, they are putting them through some type of volunteer screening process, and they are giving them training on proper handling of that product and wearing their masks and gloves and maintaining certain distances. So, yes, they're following those types of protocols. They are observed in the community at times, and so, they're corrected if they need to be through our hot team or code enforcement. And they have been, some of them, we've been in consult with through the Housing Authority and reminding them of what the procedures are and the practices, and really, for finding them resources, the best thing is for them to refer them to the hot team directly or to the Housing Authority. And we have provided them the links and the phone numbers to get into, in touch with staff directly. So, if there's a need, they can call out to us, and then, once they hand them off to us, they're in our care.
And the other thing, it may be for the chief or, or you, either one, are we continuing to move these homeless encampments on their way? I mean, I, there are some places they are, but other places are, they're just entrenched, and, and it's starting to look like a landfill. And, and I'm very concerned that there's, there's, there can be nothing good happening there, so.
I can't speak to exactly how the encampments are being handled with regard to having them move along their way. I don't believe that we're, we're, we're trying to ensure that behavior is okay and that they're social distancing to the best that we can and following the best practices. But as far as moving along at this time, if they're in public property, I believe that we're actually, we're under this health order right now, not supposed to be doing that. But I'd have to defer to the chief if he has something to add to that.
Walk faster. I'm using up my time.
Should've walked slower. Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers, Deputy Mayor Fowler, we are not actively moving people along like we have been. Obviously, if it's a very problem issue, then we, we will. But at this point in time, we don't have the company that cleans up for us actively assisting us because of the, of the virus. So, once they are on board, we will be back to what we have been doing prior.
Are, are, are they staying away because of the virus?
Yes, they are.
So, we don't have them on-call at all at this point?
My understanding is, is that because of the virus, that they don't, they're not an essential business, so they don't have the personnel to be able to come out and assist us.
Okay. Well, I've had a number of calls. Thank you, both. I've had a number of calls, and I just, I've answered them that I'm really on their side, but I also don't want to be a, the only beach that's open, the only harbor boat launch in, in, between Dana Point and San Diego, you know? And there are no, I know Dana Points probably has boats going in and out at this point, but as far as we're concerned, I'm, it scares me to give permission for anything, because it's like anything. Everybody seems to take, take it for granted that they can do anything they want, even after you have gone through something as serious as this. So, I'm, I'm going to wait and decide on this until I hear from the rest. Thank you.
10 seconds. So, I'd like to make a comment. You know, state and county health officials have credited the social distancing for reducing the spread of the COVID-19 in our region. Effective April 10th of this year, county health officials made it illegal to participate in a variety of activities, regardless of whether social distancing was possible, and that includes surfing. And I'm not a surfer. The City of Oceanside does not have the authority to violate those county orders. With rare exception, the public has practiced social distancing as part of the collective effort to protect our most vulnerable populations. The success of these efforts is evidenced by the low case and hospitalization rate in San Diego County. However, the latest county health order is unreasonable and threatens to erode the public's trust in compliance. In addition to turning surfers into criminals, the county health order also criminalized fishing alone on your boat, paddleboarding in the harbor, or even watching a sunset from your car. For a policy to be effective, it must be evenly applied, logically sound, and in the public's best interest. If social distancing can be maintained, does it matter if you're social distancing in the ocean or on land? Does it make a difference if you're six feet apart from one another while walking on the sidewalk versus walking on the beach? If you're catching fish from your boat, are you more of a danger to the public's health than buying fish at the grocery store? If 7-Eleven, Dollar Tree, and Walmart can comply with the county's social distancing and sanitation protocols, why can't other businesses like Kohl's, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, Mossi Nissan be afforded the opportunity to do the same? The safety of all should remain paramount as we proceed through this flatten-curve period. However, we need to allow active use of our parks and beaches, and we need to allow additional businesses to open on a limited basis and begin the period of economic recovery. I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez's motion, and I'll second it, and I will ask him to make one minor change, and that is in item number two, delete the words "essential" to "local economy." I think any business that can comply with the social distancing and sanitation protocols should be given the opportunity to open. I agree to that modification. Councilmember Kime?
I'm, I'm proud of the way our community, our city have come together over the last several weeks. It's an unprecedented crisis. We reacted quickly. It's unbelievably difficult to get something like this right. I'm going to use a famous quote from a colleague. I don't know science either. So, I, which is why we have relied on our medical experts and science to flatten the curve. And in Southern California, I think we have done a tremendous job. We've kept our residents safe and healthy. We've kept essential services going. But, and I think this needs to be our priority going forward, and we can do that while reevaluating essential services. And I think any type of crisis management, you have to take it day by day and reevaluate. A decision you made a week ago can be changed the next week, and can be improved upon, and I think we have room for improvement. You know, we are seeing businesses that provide almost identical services, but one is essential for small pedantic reasons. You know, whether they might provide snacks and their food, but they, if you're buying a couch from Costco, or you're buying a couch from a local store that could go out of business, I think that's where we've had some arbitrary issues. So, I mean, not only is it tough for the economy, but it hits some of our most impacted residents, some of our residents in the most challenged neighborhoods that work retail and service jobs. They might not have access to stimulus checks. They might not have savings, and now they're not working. And it's ju, it is, it's going to be devastating for Oceanside. And I think, you know, prioritizing our economy and following science and medical advice, that they don't have to be mutually exclusive. We can do both. We can follow the medical direction from the county right now and have more businesses open, as long as they follow the rules safely and we're able to enforce that. And I think that's what, I think that's what this letter needs to be about. I'm, I'm concerned about demanding dates, because while I think it's important to do it now, I think this needs to be a partnership through the county, and we need to really work together. It's not a time to be divisive. But I do, it's very important that we prioritize the economy and flatten the curve, but you can do those two things at the same time. So, I, I would be supportive of a letter. I would like to change some things and work with our local leaders to see what we can do safely and reevaluate, week by week, and see if businesses, if it's working, if it's not. So, and we can do that and flatten the curve, and we can protect our residents. I mean, we have some of our most challenged neighborhoods, you know, half mile from the beach. They live in tiny apartments, 600, 800 square feet with a family, and they don't have a backyard. They're not in a single-family home. They need access to our parks. They need access to our beaches. In Crown Heights, you can see the beach from Crown Heights, and I think we're doing those residents a disservice if we're not allowing them to get out of their houses. And it's, it's, you know, you can walk the street, but we need to have, we have these resources that I think we can access responsibly and safely within those guidelines, and I think we have, we have the ability to do that. So, I, I do have concerns with the letter. I don't think we need, you know, this is not a priority over economy or health. It's both of them, and it needs to be in partnership with other cities. I don't want to open our beaches and put our residents and our officers in a position where the only beach is open. And they're down there with traffic stopped, it's packed, we can't manage the social distancing. I think that's a recipe for failure, and I wouldn't support that. But we need to come up with a plan with all 10 mayors of our coastal cities up and down the coast, find something that works, and get it done. If we don't have a plan, we're not going to do it right. And so, that's why I'm concerned about rushing and doing it quickly. I would like it done, I would like it done quickly, but I'd rather have it done right. And so, and I think we can do that, but I would like to change a little bit of the language.
Councilmember Rodriguez?
No, I appreciate that, Councilmember Kime. Unfortunately, I think during this time where decisions on a local level are going way too far one direction against our civil liberties and our economy, we have to take a stand and be a leading voice as the third-largest city in San Diego County. I have talked to several local elected officials, and I think they're on the same page with us, and I think that they will be closely behind us. But our request is to give local jurisdictions control. We're not asking for exclusivity. We're asking them to give local control on these items. There was a motion that was modified. It was seconded, and I would like it to stand.
Councilmember Sanchez, keep it short, please.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out that we already have the authority over our beaches in terms of walking through our beaches. There is nothing holding us back on that. So, that doesn't stop folks, our, our communities in Crown Heights or Eastside or whoever, to walk on the beach, on the sand. We can do that. The city already retains that jurisdiction. What we don't have is jurisdiction over the water, water sports, and that is the county. And I already understand that there, there is, there are already discussions on coordinating this effort, because nobody wants to be the first one and the only one doing these things, because then, of course, it would be impossible, not possible, which means not possible, to enforce the six-foot social distancing. There's, that is the bottom line, is how can we enforce this? Or do we want to go ahead and allow for, you know, our, our city to start spiking in terms of positive? And these are severe, severe cases of COVID-19 being positive, not just somebody, most people don't even get tested. So, when we see 53, or now 56 positives in Oceanside, that means that probably 10 times that are positive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would just like to say, there is a plan in place. A draft plan has been routed to all of the cities, the coastal cities, that would coordinate the opening of the beach upon a time certain, so that there is not one city that's opening without, in the coordination with everyone else. Councilmember Kime?
Our, our beaches are currently closed. Is that correct, Ms. Larson?
Correct. Right now, we are not allowing folks to walk on the sand, and we're prohibited from opening the water. But as the mayor stated just this afternoon, agreement was reached on a coordinated effort. We don't have the final document to share with everyone yet, but there is that coordinated effort underway.
Okay. So, I, I think that's important. If we want to open those up, maybe we can entertain that motion, but I think it needs to be done as a joint. Would we, I'm going to ask one more change to the letter. Can we do, can we add something about opening beaches and different amenities in conjunction with our coastal partners, so we're not the only one? That's very important.
Well, I think if the county health officer modifies the order, it's going to apply to everybody.
Would you agree with that, Mr. Mullen, on just to address-
Yeah, just to-
Councilmember Kime? I, I mean, I think we're on the same page. I just, I think this request is, would do, I think, what Councilmember Kime is asking, if you can clarify.
Yeah, sure. Just two quick points. The current order doesn't explicitly close beaches.
Right.
It imposes, though, a social distancing protocol if, on parks and beaches. It does close parking lots. It leaves it to local discretion to enforce social distancing, but it also says, I think in Section 12, that if, if you're unable to enforce those social distancing protocols, then the beaches, parks shall be closed. So, it, it kind of addresses both issues. With respect to the point, if there is an amended health order, it would apply countywide, certainly.
And that's my concern.
And I think you wanted the letter to say that, if I'm not mistaken.
I want us to, since we have the local authority to open the beaches, I don't want to open them without the rest of the county beaches open. That's going to put us in an extremely difficult spot. But I think if we can successfully do social distancing and do this safely, then I would support this.
I, I support modifying the letter to, to just clarify that we would like the efforts of opening the beaches and recreational facilities to be a coordinated effort when that, that time comes.
Deputy Mayor Fowler?
So, if that's the case, we have to take that date out of May 1st. I, I, I would say that that's what you're, you're trying to put their foot on their throat, and they're standing down there saying, maybe July, you know, May 1st. We, I, I think you got to get to the point.
I get it. Yeah, I, I, thank you for bringing that up. I, I agree now. We'll just leave, I would just leave it as is, because it gets the point across. If it opens in the county, it's going to be a county effort.
We can't, we can't wait till July. We'll be, heck, no. We'll be dead by then. I, I think if we say to take effect as soon as possible, no, I mean, I think they, they need to know that we want this open no later than May 1st. Although, May 1st is a Friday, I think, you know, even the Monday or Tuesday, but I think we need to, we need to say, open it as soon as possible.
What did I hear about May 3rd?
So, the current county health order goes through the end of April. So, I think a lot of folks have looked at May 1 as, as the county's going to need to issue extended guidance or modifications that would go into effect on May 1. But May 1 is a Friday, and the other coastal jurisdictions all agreed that it's probably better to open the beaches early in the week on a Monday or Tuesday to make sure that you're able to manage it before weakened crowds arrive. I would note that our lifeguards did participate in the county coastal group of putting together the criteria, and we were successful in maintaining social distancing while we had our beaches open, and that input was instrumental in helping to form that guidance and very well received by the other cities.
And, and the reason I'm okay with the May 1st is because that current order on May 1st, they can modify it-
they can modify it to say, open the beach on May 3rd or 4th.
Thanks.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 401. Sanchez, no?
Go to item 17, which is the approval of an application of $29,808 from the general fund to continue distribution of hot meals.
Good evening, City Council. Megan Crooks with the Neighborhood Services Department. I wanted to recommend that the city council appropriate an additional $29,808 from the general fund on allocated reserves to continue the distribution of hot meals to the most vulnerable Oceanside residents through May 8th, 2020, during the COVID-19 epidemic. On March 18th, city council directed staff to provide additional financial support toward an increase in hot meals to the Oceanside community. On March 25th, the city council appropriated $464,564 for Ose, Oseid Kitchen Collaborative and $50,000 for Restaurant-to-Go Hot Meal Program. On March 30th, 2020, staff implemented the first distribution of the Restaurant-to-Go Hot Meals. An overview of the food distribution that's been occurring in the city. Again, there's been a lot of effort in the community and the community organizations and volunteers and countywide also have really pulled together to serve our community. 28,393 meals have been provided to date by Oceanside Kitchen Collaborative. 1,705 Restaurant-to-Go Meals are provided weekly through this Restaurant-to-Go Meal Program. 75,957 weekly meals are provided by Oceanside Unified School District and that now includes both breakfast and lunch. And there are 290 food boxes distributed weekly through our resource centers. There's 797 meals provided by other organizations, many of which include both breakfast and lunch. And there's 180 seniors receiving meals by serving seniors daily out of our Oceanside Senior Center. And with that particular program, they were a congregate meal program and they went to curbside pickup. And staff worked with them to go through the list of seniors and drive it down to the most, most vulnerable seniors that shouldn't even be coming out for curbside pickup and staff are delivering those meals to their door. This is just a little exhibit of all of the food programs that are going on. You can see the pickup of different organizations and volunteers at El Corazon Senior Center. They pick up their meals in their vehicles and they either take them to a designated location where people can come and do a curbside pickup or, as you see in the bottom right corner, some meals are being distributed to the homeless. And then we have the, the staff, Parks and Recreation staff, delivering the senior meals to their homes. And we have food distribution pickups at our resource centers as well. Through the Restaurant-to-Go Meals, the organizations that are receiving the To-Go Meals were found through San Diego North County Food Bank. So, staff worked with San Diego North County Food Bank to identify what organizations were seeking food options and which ones would benefit most from hot meals. The restaurant selection was something that was done through an organization called Plain Clarity. They're a PR group that works with restaurant groups. And they already had a, a network of restaurants and they were the quickest way for us to get hot meals distributed very quickly at the beginning of COVID-19. The restaurants that are currently matched up with an organization are Mission Bar and Grill, Wrench and Rodent, Matsu, Guaihan Grill, Mangia Ebevi, and The Plot. Each one is identified along with an organization and they have been paired up that way so that they can take into consideration any specific food requirements for the group that they're serving. And then it's consistent and they can ensure that the meals each time are monitored and kept in line with those food restrictions. We also do coordination with Oseid Kitchen Collaborative. So, initially as well, once we found the organizations, we cross-checked with Oseid Kitchen Collaborative to make sure there was no duplication of effort. And then anytime that we are hearing of a need from the community, we first check with Oseid Kitchen Collaborative, who we already have a contract for, to see if they have any additional meals that they could pair up with a group. And if they do, we match them with Oseid Kitchen Collaborative first. As well, if Oseid Kitchen Collaborative has a group and they don't have enough food production to give to them, then they can refer them to us. Right now, there is not additional need met or, or that's needs to be met for food distribution other than the continuity of the organizations that we're currently working with until the, the stay-at-home orders are released and people can come out and do their shopping from, out from under the stay-at-home order based on their vulnerability category. And the only other area that we will need to add food distribution to is the additional homeless bridge housing that we will create through a motel contract. But we have funding for that and that's not included in tonight's action. The fiscal impact staff is requesting an appropriation of $29,808 to the non-departmental account. And that's where the invoices for the restaurants will be paid out of. This is also something that is submitted for potential reimbursement through our EOC efforts. I have a photo here of the food stock at El Corazon, or the Green Kitchen over at El Corazon Senior Center. So, you can see the amount of food that is either being purchased from restaurants or being donated and not getting wasted. And with that, staff recommends that the city council appropriate the $29,808 from the general fund on allocated reserve to continue the distribution of hot meals to the most vulnerable residents through May 8th, 2020, during COVID-19 epidemic.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, do we have any public on this item?
No public on this item.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. So, what happens after May 8th?
Councilmember Sanchez and City Council, May 8th was selected because it would put us to another council action if we, we needed to do so. But it also put us a week past what the current health order is. And so, we could assess as to whether or not we needed additional funding at that time if it needed to continue.
Okay. I see that the, the entity that's doing the most, getting the most food out is Oceanside Unified School District. Do you know what their capacity is in terms of potentially going beyond May 8th?
No, I, I haven't had that direct communication with them. I, we can find that information for the city council. I imagine that they will, my, my best guess is that they would continue their operations until they either resume school or until the normal school year would end and they would go into their typical summer program.
Right, thank you. Yeah, I've been hearing that food is gonna be a very critical issue coming the summer and, you know, as we rev up back to, going back to work again. My other question is, do we know how the farmers are doing? I had heard that they were not doing well at all. Are we coordinated at all with, with the farmers?
Initially, we did coordinate with them to see if we could get food distributions over to resource centers in different places. But at that time, through collaboration in our conversations with Oseid Kitchen Collaborative, they were working with them. And there are food boxes that those farmers are putting together to sell themselves online and doing their own deliveries. But we can follow up with that and get information to city council with the farmers.
Okay, thank you. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move approval of the appropriation. And I'd like to, to get more information at a, at a future council meeting regarding the capacity, what, what plans we might have to put in place to, to continue to provide food to the community. As well as, I'd like to get more information about how the farmers are doing. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
The, the farmers are not doing well. I didn't see anywhere where schools were part of our program.
I'm Deputy Mayor Feller and council, no, the schools are running their own program. But I just gave an update. They have been sharing their numbers with us so that the city council understands the amount of food resource that's getting into the city.
Yeah, their Tuesdays and Thursdays do not come down Mission Avenue at lu, at lunch because it's backed up every direction. They're, they're doing thousands of meals. Do we have a problem with refrigeration or anything? We've, we've had cool days so far, but do we have a problem with getting the meals where they need to go and stay?
Councilmember, Deputy Mayor Feller and City Council, I have not heard any concerns about refrigeration. I know initially, the serving seniors needed additional equipment and that came in that first week.
Okay. I second the motion, so.
Councilmember Com?
I, just a couple of quick questions. I, is there a chance that we can go back and spread out some of this to other restaurants instead of the same ones, just so we can, there might be some other ones that would be willing to participate and that we could give some, to get some aid to some other restaurants?
We can put a feeler out there for restaurants that might be interested in that. Right now, the requirements that we had asked for was whether they could prepare a meal for $8 per meal to keep the cost down so we could spread this out as long as we could. And then also their capacity to produce that type of bulk food product. Not all the restaurants were able to do so. Some of our higher, our organizations with a higher receipt or higher volume of meals, we've, we've paired them up properly with the, the facilities that have the ability to do that type of catering-level production. But we can still go out and see if there's additional, such as with the additional service to the homeless group that we're going to place. Those, we're seeking new restaurants for that. So, every time we have a new organization, we try to pair them up with a new restaurant.
Yeah, I just, I think obviously our restaurants are, you know, one of the harder-hit industries and anything we can do, even if it's a little bit of relief to more of them, I think that would be helpful. So, thank you.
We have a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion approved, 50.
We have an 18, item 18, which is a report on a potential loan program for small businesses.
Good evening, mayor and council members. Michelle Geller, Economic Development Manager, here to present recommendations for a loan program to assist Oceanside businesses affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. The recommendation this evening is to receive the loan program report and provide direction to staff. This loan program comes from council's direction at the April 1st emergency council meeting. As you are well aware, many businesses are experiencing financial hardship as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic and related health orders. March 16th really marked the tipping point for small businesses. Dine-in restaurants were ordered to close, as were bars and event venues, followed by gyms, salons, and then eventually all nonessential businesses. The Federal Small Business Administration already had a program in place called the Economic Injury Disaster Loan, or IDOL, and they subsequently launched the Paycheck Protection Program, or the PPP, under the CARES Act to provide even more financial assistance to small businesses. But unfortunately, these programs were overwhelmed within just a couple of weeks. The SBA actually cut off applications last Thursday. However, yesterday in the Senate, a unanimous agreement was reached to allocate $310 billion in additional funding to the PPP and $50 billion additional to the IDOL. That next phase of funding is expected to be approved by Congress tomorrow. And the SBA is saying that once again, they will begin taking applications, most likely on Monday. Am I behind here? Yeah. We've tracked the experiences of 29 Oceanside businesses that have applied for one or both of the SBA loan programs. You can see the numbers here of the 24 businesses that applied for the IDOL and most of those were mid to late March when they applied. Only two have received their loan advances. And the advance is sort of a new thing that they added, which is a forgivable advance of $1,000 per employee up to $10,000. Excuse me. Of those that have applied for the PPP, which opened up at the beginning of, of this month, just two have been funded that we're aware of. The majority of the businesses we've spoken to are, are basically in a holding pattern, waiting to hear whether they've been approved. Since mid-March, a few other cities in the region have stood up COVID-19-related loan programs. The city of San Diego allocated $6.1 million from a variety of sources, including CDBG funds. They received over 9,000 applications within a few weeks and actually closed applications for that program as of April 15th because funds had been depleted. San Marcos allocated $3 million in reserves to a program and has processed 89 loans totaling $2.35 million to date. The most recent program to be announced, I think just yesterday, was through the county of San Diego, which allocated $5 million to a loan program for small businesses and nonprofits in unincorporated areas. Details of the proposed framework for an Oceanside loan program are attached to the staff report. The proposed program would provide loans ranging from $2,500 to $20,000. And there are three tiers of repayment terms based on the amount of the loan. The proposed program is open to independently-owned, consumer-oriented businesses here in Oceanside that have been ordered to close or significantly, significantly alter their operations as a result of the COVID-19 health orders. The program is geared toward restaurant and retail establishments, which, as you know, are businesses that have been hardest hit. And the other main requirement is that the businesses has, the business has already applied for and been approved for one of the SBA loans, but funding is not forthcoming in a timely manner. The Small Business Development Center, which you're probably familiar with, is a nonprofit, SBA-funded business consulting organization that provides technical assistance on a variety of small business needs. They're really the folks on the front lines of helping small businesses with SBA emergency loans. And they have former bankers and loan officers on their staff with specific expertise in this area. And the SBDC is willing to partner with us to review loan application packets for completeness and recommend approvals. I've had conversations with staff in other cities that manage these types of loan programs and unanimously, they say it is an all-consuming effort on the part of staff. Our economic development team here in Oceanside is made up of two people, myself and Patty Mosher, our economic development specialist. A proposed loan program would also impact the finance department, city attorney's office, and others based on the proposed workflow. Additionally, the types of businesses most impacted and most likely to apply for these loans, which are restaurants and retail, tend to have thin margins even in a strong economy. And there is a potential for a high, higher-than-average default rate. Like just about every city in the nation, Oceanside anticipates reduced revenues as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic with regard to sales tax, TOT, et cetera. The memo attached to the staff report outlines Oceanside's relatively low levels of general fund reserves in comparison to other cities. While we do work collaboratively on economic development with our neighboring cities, the fact remains that we will all be working hard to build back our economies on a local level. So, at this point, I will turn it over to Finance Director Jane McPherson to provide information about the last bullet, the investment portfolio, the last two.
I think we need to invest a little bit more in these. Well, that's not very useful. Oh, well, you did more. Good luck, everybody. Good luck to me. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. You've received Mayor and City Councilmembers. You've received different memos. You've heard different times about the investment portfolio funds. People ask because it's a huge portfolio. However, there's a lot of rules that go with it, and there's a difference between cash and our investments, and you cannot take that investment portfolio and loan it out. It's against policy. So what can we do? Well, we do have interest that's earned. City Policy 200-11, while it outlines how we currently allocate interest, including the one-third that is sent to PERS to pay down our unfunded liability, that can be changed. City Manager has the option to change it. And in fact, I was referenced Steve Hodges, our Treasury Manager, was showing me on the state side, which our investment policy has to be at the same level as the state because there are guidelines for our city policy for investments. And in that policy, they clearly state that the interest can be used all for the general fund, basically. So or can be allocated as to how we're doing it now. So we're within the rights if we were to choose that route. So those are the options that we have. You know, the general fund reserve, you've heard me talk about it before. You've heard us talk about it when we did the bonds, the bond for the Aquatic Center. And now, back when we did the bond for the Aquatic Center, times were different. We had everything on the way up, but right now, it's very uncertain. So it's something that both the City Manager and I, as well as many of us, but we talked quite a bit about it and preserving our, you know, as much as we can. So those are the different things that, you know, you have different sources you could use if you choose to go that direction, but the investment portfolio is not able to be drawn upon. And I'm available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Just move forward with the rest of the presentation. Should the City Council desire to implement a loan program, staff recommends modification of Council Policy 200-11 by determining that the current conditions constitute a fiscal emergency and include in the modification that repayments, including interest, be allocated to the funds as if they were interest earnings, and then allocate up to 1.8, excuse me, $1.18 million in general fund interest earnings to the proposed loan program. And a program like this could assist 59 businesses at minimum. So in closing, the recommendation is that the City Council receive this report on a potential loan program for small businesses affected by COVID-19 that would provide short-term gap funding until federal funding arrives and provide direction to staff. That concludes my presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Navarro, we have public on this?
Yes, we had eight comments that were forwarded to the council and will be made available on the city's website. We had one comment that wanted to be read into the agenda from Nadine Scott. "Consideration of the item is premature and should be tabled until the budget is prepared and presented for staff and public scrutiny. I believe the risk is simply too high to fund such a program, particularly when there is a high likelihood of cutting staff, programs, projects, public safety, and PERS payments." Nadine Scott. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you. Councilmember Rodriguez.
Thank you very much, staff, for putting that presentation together and getting that in front of us and before us today. I've spoken to a lot of our local small businesses, the retail shops, the restaurants, the barbers, and they're really, really struggling right now. And we have probably the most, one of the most important decisions that we're going to have in a while to the future of Oceanside's economy here before us in in saving and partnering and helping and investing in our own backyard, these struggling businesses. Is there risk? Yes. Are we attempting to mitigate that risk through a preapproval process, through a personal guarantee, through an agreement, through requiring them to apply for all this federal help that hasn't shown up for 85% that have applied? Yes. We're following all the checkboxes, and we're investing in the future of Oceanside's economy because if these businesses fail, regardless of the long hours, thank God for our staff that they're going to have to work to process this and Mr. Mullins' office and the loan agreements, that's the future of Oceanside right there. And I guarantee you that if those businesses fail, we're going to have to be cutting a whole lot more, and our reserves are going to be cut a whole lot more than if we can help them now, than if we make the effort today and help them. I do see that we have to potentially make a modification to a council policy, which I'm I'm fine with, but $1 million isn't gonna isn't gonna cut it. In my book, we need to find more money. We have other general fund money that we have the flexibility, and policy allows, per council instruction, to allocate, to help this. I would like to see a fund of no less than 3 million. I'm fine with, if if I don't have support on the dais, looking at this as a Phase One for the 1 million, and then coming back within 30 days and staff show us other funding options for the other two. And that way, we'll also be able to look out, how is this program working, what's happening, is there need for more? But I we need $3 million committed to the future of Oceanside and these small businesses. Thank you.
I have a question for our city treasurer. We had received several emails from former treasurer, Dr. Tricky, and I'm wondering if you have reviewed them and if you have any opinions on what he was suggesting versus what the staff is suggesting?
Can I prepare to present that? I do have my comments.
Your your mic's not on.
Oh, sorry.
We do have that ready to present. My understanding was that after the after Jane, that I was going to be recognized before you went to the dais. So
Can you respond to that?
I'll make my comments and bring up our Treasury Manager, and then we'll address the former treasurer's public comments. So our city's annual budget meeting is scheduled for April 29, 2020, and this is this will occur just one week from today. It is highly advisable to wait and examine all of our budgetary projections before any consideration be given to the creation of an emergency economic assistance program for non-city private business loans. We are sensitive to the difficulties of local businesses but cannot infringe on city services and take the risk of this program when many other programs are being made available to those businesses. As you can imagine, the city will be taking on substantial financial losses of its own from major losses of sales tax and major losses of transient occupancy tax. This is estimated to be in the millions of dollars, and I would let our Financial Services Director address that specific component, so Jane can talk about that if you want to bring her up. But today, we do have staff present, including our financial experts, Jane McPherson, who's our Financial Services Director, along with Steve Hodges, our Treasury Manager. They're ready to answer your questions. Please use this time and opportunity in order to gain complete perspectives as to whether or not an emergency economic assistance program is the right way to proceed from here or the proper use of expenditures of the city's gains from interest on investments in our portfolio. At this time, I would like to introduce to you our Treasury Manager, Steve Hodges. He has clear advice and informational updates for the council. He'll be happy to answer your questions, and when he completes, I'll return for my final comments.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council.
Can you get the mic up higher?
Sorry about that. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I'm Steve Hodges, Treasury Manager. Just to address some of the the emails that have been going around and kind of reiterate what Jane had said previously is, we don't specifically allow loans directly from our investment portfolio. And the reason being, it's, sorry, I'm still not loud enough.
You're tall, that's why.
The reason being is is that we go by pooled cash, which means the cash, which you can look at as in our bank account, it belongs to several different funds. And within those funds, there's different obligations and commitments that the money is already allocated towards. So we also need to go by what the state advises. Our investment policy is a little bit more stringent than what the state allows. And so specifically in our policy, we do not allow loans from our investment policy. But it also does not allow us to invest in, this would be a promissory note, the state allows you to invest in promissory notes that are backed by mortgages, and that would not fall into the parameters of this program. And I'm available for any specific questions anyone has.
I think the mayor asked about your opinion of of the emails that you received or that we all received.
Yeah, the emails that I received were directly related to taking money strictly straight out of the investment portfolio, which went in.
And that's the tricky email, right?
Correct. And then the other recommendations regarding changing the policy, I think, have been been addressed.
Thank you, Steve. As a city treasurer, I have asked a lot of questions about this matter, and it is my opinion that if this loan program is approved, that it will negatively impact our city's ability to provide services. Further, that such a program will have a negative impact upon our city's credit rating because it will decrease our city's reserves. The City of Oceanside currently does not have the highest credit rating. However, we have been and are striving to increase our reserves in order to achieve the highest credit rating. The loan program would have the opposite effect. A highest credit rating is important when we issue our municipal bonds. On March 10, I sent a memo to the City Council and City Manager with regards to the major economic downturn that happened on March 9, and declining bond yields, and how that is now projected to cut in half our expected investment portfolio returns. Thus, our expected $7.5 million to $8 million is now being cut in half to $3.75 to $4 million for the fiscal year 2019-20 and into the next fiscal year 2020-2021. This is a critical factor in analyzing whether or not to fund a risk loan program, and as you saw on the slide, considered a high-risk loan program. This proposed loan program is not a function of city government and not the proper use of city emergency funding. It is misleading to say it is. City emergency funding should be and has always been used only for city necessities, services, and repairs, in the city government's obligation to all of its citizens. The City Council should be asking pertinent, well-thought-out questions right now, such as, what is the projected budget shortfall for the City of Oceanside for this year, for next year? How many City of Oceanside jobs will be cut for this year, for next year? And just today, from the Business News from CNBC, an article appears that says massive layoffs and pay cuts are likely coming to state and local governments. Also, what city services to the public will need to be scaled back that the public will suffer from for this year and for next year? So in conclusion, it is our position from the Office of the Treasurer and based on sound financial principles that we do not recommend this program. Thank you.
I have a question for either Finance Director or City Manager. It's my understanding that the interest on the portfolio, the general fund interest, is not included in the five-year forecast, and we don't actually budget that amount.
Mayor Weiss, that is correct. The fund, those funds, since the earnings are unknown, they're not included in the budget or in the forecast, but ultimately, when they were received, they are credited to the city's accounts.
Thank you.
Use for future-year budgeting.
Councilmember Khan.
I want to address some of the comments that were just raised or questions that were just raised. We have been asking hard questions all week. We had a new projected budget deficit of possibly $8 million. That's what we, you know, those are guesses right now. I have a question. What if we lose 25% of our local restaurants and retail? What is that going to do to our budget and our essential services?
Is that a rhetorical question?
No, no, that was a question.
I find it a great question.
Oral question.
No, no, what I'm, okay.
It's a rhetorical question.
Okay. Let me rephrase.
Okay.
What?
Don't be angry.
What will be the impact if 25% of our restaurants or retail businesses in the city don't make it through this? What will be the impact of that retail sales tax loss, Measure X funding? What do you think that will have on our economy and our services? Impact our core services?
Every part of the economy is taking a hit.
Right.
No, I I understand. This is, and this is not an easy thing. This is not our first choice of what we wanted to do. I'm not angry. I'm just passionate. And I'm passionate for the people that aren't working right now, for the people that don't have any income that it's just, it is a stressful time for everyone in the city, and we're trying to make tough decisions. I don't think any of us wanted to have to do this loan program. So what happened with the last round of federal funding, if our Economic Development Manager can bring those numbers back up, out of the businesses that you surveyed and requested, how many of those were actually given funds?
So we surveyed 29 businesses, and so far, two have gotten their loan advance, which is sort of a small amount, up to $10,000, in preparation for receiving their full IDL funds, and then two have received their PPPs.
Okay, so two out of 23 for PPP and two out of 24 for businesses. So we're under 10% funding, essentially.
And some have been approved, just not, sorry, some, most are in a holding pattern. They have applied, and they're waiting, yes.
And I think this has been a massive failure on the federal level, and I don't think anybody wanted to have to do this. But now, we've been working, I think, multiple avenues. We've been working closely with a credit, local credit union to help shepherd local businesses through this process and get them funding now. But it's already, you know, a month into these closures, and we're not seeing funding at these businesses. I've talked to numerous businesses over the last couple of weeks, and they have not gotten anything. And they don't, not only have they not gotten anything, they haven't received responses. You talked to some of these that have applied at a big bank, B of A, Chase, they haven't even gotten a response back on their application. That's two weeks in. That's a whole paycheck. So I I think that's our concern, and I think this is not a first choice. This is not something that I would have ever wanted to do, and I don't think this is a standard, proper role for city government. But we're in a one-of-a-kind crisis situation. I think, and that's a question I think we need to ask. That's a fundamental question today, is if we let 25, 30, 35% of our businesses fail, what is that going to do to our economy? Are we going to have to make those layoffs anyways? So I mean, I think it's it's not an easy, it's not an easy answer, and it's not an easy decision to make. But I think we have to, if the federal government is not going to provide this funding and these businesses are going to stay closed, we have to be able to be there to support our local economy, our local businesses, which is going to pay our bills for the coming years. And it's not just next year or the year after that. It's the next 10, 20 years. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that if we were the only ones considering that, that will be different. But there are multiple jurisdictions throughout the county that are looking at something like this. I'm willing to second the motion to do the 1.2 million as a Phase One. Since this is COVID-related, I would just ask that we're going to have a COVID update on every agenda, that you just include, as one of your slides, how many people have applied, how much money we've given out, and we can make decisions as we move forward. But I will second the motion to to move forward as a Phase One. Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. You know, our small businesses are hurting. But we are all hurting. We have over 6,000 small businesses in Oceanside. I think it's probably closer to 10,000 myself. And we're all hurting. The city is hurting. We don't have our budget, we haven't had our budget hearing. That's next week. But it is true, we are going to have to cut, and we don't know at this point what. Public safety is 62% of the budget. It's probably more than that at this point because our budget has been shrinking. Our funds have been shrinking. And there's no guarantee that we're going to be able to recoup all those funds. And there's no guarantee that we're going to be able to recoup all those funds. My biggest concern here is that we don't even know at this point what we're going to have to cut to be able to do this. It's clear that staff does not support this. I quote from the staff report, "All the cities that have initiated business assistance programs have reserves that exceed Oceanside's on a per capita basis, and the city faces an uncertain fiscal future with economists predicting a severe recession and unemployment claims at record highs." We don't know when this is going to end, and our first priority is our, to our residents. As much as I would like to help everyone, we can't. This would be, even if we were to do the 1.18, that would be up to maybe 59 businesses, and we have over 6,000, probably closer to 10,000. There's just no way. We would, this would be a drop in the bucket, but for us, it would mean services. It would mean delays in 911 calls. It would mean not having parks open. Once we are finally able to get them open, there won't be any programs, no after-school programs. We have so much that we provide services, levels of service. And I'm very worried about whether or not we're going to have to do layoffs. We're already hearing that this program itself would require a lot of admin, a lot of work from our, and would take away from the marketing of our city. So, I'm very, very concerned about this. I thought about this and thought about it, asked a lot of hard questions, and pretty much what I've learned is this would be more symbolic than anything else, and it's more political than it is reality, than based on facts. And that is my big concern here, is that we, we need to be basing every decision on facts and, and what we really do know. And we know that there is bigger need than 59, and it's a bigger need than, what, times that, times three? Bigger need than that. I did ask, I did have a chance to sit down with the treasurer and ask a lot of hard questions, understood that the treasurer's, the treasurer's offices, person who advises would be here, and I thank you. I wish that you had said a little bit more about what I've been hearing in terms of why this is not a good idea. We don't deal with high risk. We don't deal with that, ever. And with respect to this program, due to a projected decline in revenues across the board and a looming recession, it is already expected that expenditures will exceed revenues, which will further draw down cash. That was an email that was sent to us, or a report that was sent to us on April 13. It's not like anything has changed. We know that we can't afford this. Each one of us on the dais knows that we can't afford this, that we can't afford to do something above and beyond what we are required to do as a city. My heart goes out to every single person who is not able to work right now and earn a living. Every single person. And, and the fact that we have some subsidies out there via unemployment and, and making it easier for people to apply for unemployment, and the programs that are coming, that have come down from the federal government, it's really, it's really good that we have those, and it's unfortunate that it's never going to be enough, never going to be enough. How do you ethically decide amongst all the businesses in Oceanside? You can't. We have never done anything that would be just for the first-come, first-served. It smacks of being unethical in the first place and, and just unreasonable in the second I appreciate that we all have the desire to help our small businesses and, you know, mid-sized businesses and, you know, everyone in Oceanside. But the truth of the matter is, we can't. We can't. We have to think about the projects that we're going to need to do after all this is said and done. We need to build fire stations nine and 10. How are we going to do that if we can't do bonding because our rates are, our rating is, is low, lower than an A? We, we once upon a time had what, a double A or was that a triple A? I think it was a double A. And to go lower than that means the conditions and, will be different, will be, it'll be more expensive for us to go out on bonds. And we just did the bonding for Measure X. We're not going to be able to do bonding again, not, not in this climate, not in this uncertainty, until there is a vaccine, which is what, in about a year? It's so uncertain. So, to respond to the question, what would happen if 25% failed? 25% may actually fail with or without this program, with or without the federal program, with or without money, the federal money. It's going to be different. It's going to be a reimagining. It's going to be a social distancing within restaurants. How many people can do that? This razor-thin profits, razor-thin. And it's based on the number of tables. So, you cut that in half, you know, most of it is going to be takeout, continue to be takeout as, as, you know, and pushing that. So, with, with all due respect to my colleagues here and to the needs that we're going to have to be, have to say which ones we're going to cut next week, we have to stay focused on our obligations to our residents to provide, to continue to provide the services that we so desperately need to do. Thank you.
Ms. Larson, I reviewed the backup information for the budget workshop for next week. It's my understanding and looking at those documents, that your current proposal closes the gap between the expected revenues and expenditures without eliminating any current full-time positions.
Mayor, that's correct. We're looking at a 5% reduction in revenues based on the information we know at this point. And so, we're able to handle that amount of a reduction by reducing our expenses through our maintenance and operation contracts, as well as vacant positions that we have. So, salary savings from hiring freeze that those positions would not be filled. Those are the primary two ways we would close that gap. But that's just based on the best information we have at this time, and if revenues, and projections that we've received from our consultants. But if revenues are at a lower level, we will have to look at additional measures.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Feller?
Michelle, it's nice to see you.
Likewise.
After being, what do you call it, social-distanced from us? How many business licenses do we have?
We have about 6,000 active business licenses.
Yeah, I thought so. It's not quite 10,000, a little short. I had a question on the second page. It says repayment of bridge funding is not an eligible loan expense. So, where would that bridge funding have come from that?
On, on page two of the staff report?
Yes. Under Small Business Financial Assistance.
Can you tell me what paragraph?
About the fourth, second dot down, about mid-page.
Oh, I see. So, the, the paycheck protection program can only be used for very specific things like paying employees, paying rent. It's, it's very specific. So, that is not eligible to repay a loan, a bridge loan like this one.
So, where the bridge loan that, that didn't?
Yes, this is referring to our loan as the bridge loan.
I think I lost consciousness there. And I had heard that we were looking at a possibility of having a credit union or something like that. Did that ever work out that you know of? Ryan told me about it, so.
I'll address it, I'll address it in a second in my comments again.
Okay. You know, that's really where this should go if we, and put the, if, if somehow we could loan the money to, or give the money as a loan to the credit union to be repaid by the credit union, is, is what I was hoping we could get to, then our, our issue would not be as, we wouldn't be caught at the end of all this and going after our own businesses. You're talking about 1.184, is that the, was that what I heard? What happens at the end of this all? And we do have to try to recover these loans if, if they haven't. I mean, is that become legal issues or?
Yeah, potentially. There's, Mayor and Council, the loan agreement in draft form now includes a personal guarantee from the borrower, so we would have to potentially take action to use that as a remedy.
The maximum loan they can get is 10,000?
20, 20,000.
20,000.
Under this framework.
2,520,000.
Correct.
Well, I'd like to hear what Ryan has to say before I decide. I appreciate your input, understanding how hard it is to operate a business, and I was successful at operating for 10 and a half years, Mr. It, it just appears that it's a hard thing for, for us to get, as a small business, get a loan from city government. I know that if I could have waited about six months and Tom Wilson had, had to move me, that would have saved me $80,000 to move the restaurant, but that didn't work out. So, anyway, I'd like to hear from Ryan.
I think it's easy for us to sit up here, and those of us who have fairly secure incomes right now, and say this is going to be tough times, these are going to pass, because they're not as tough for us as they are for other people, and I think we need to be very cognizant of that. And then I agree with my colleague, Councilwoman Sanchez, I think we're not doing enough. 59 businesses is 10% of our 600 businesses. But, you know what, it's not symbolic for those 59 businesses if they get to stay open. I can tell you that is a huge deal. If we save 10 businesses, that is compelling, and I think that's important, and that's something we need to think about. And so, 10%, what if we lose? What if we're able to save, and I know this is unrealistic, businesses that we provide a loan to? That's 10% of our businesses.
1%.
I'm sorry, 1%. 1%. That would be, that's 59 businesses is a significant number. So, I just have, I think it's, we are doing a program that is prudent. It's not, and that, and that's why it's only 1.184, it's less than 1% of our general fund. It's money that, I was a police officer, I would be happy to drive an older car, use older equipment, use older uniforms for a little bit if it meant that residents in our city or business owners could be successful and get through this time. And I think we can do this program, and we're not going, this is not going to be longer than 911 calls. This is, I think that's a little bit hyperbole again. I think this is going to be, we can look to make up this 1.1 million, and I think doing whatever we can right now is important. So, thank you.
Councilman Rodriguez?
I think there's a consensus on the dais of the importance and the urgency surrounding Oceanside's future. I would go as far as to say that not supporting this loan program is, is not supporting our public safety sectors, is not supporting our, our city as a whole, it's not supporting the future health and well-being of Oceanside. This is, in my opinion, the highest in best use of these funds, investing in businesses. You guys have to understand, I'm a small business owner, I know Deputy Mayor Feller has been a small business owner. We are fighters. Small business owners are fighters, they're hustlers, they, they have to provide, they have to make things happen. They don't have a security of a paycheck and a pension. If they don't work, they don't eat. And we're in a position, as a city, to help our small businesses get through this short season. Okay, we're Oceanside, we're going to survive this, we're going to make it through this, and we have to help our small businesses. A million dollars is not enough, but I understand to get support today, we're going to move on it, and we're going to have regular updates. I want to see at least 3 million, but we are investing in individuals that want to be in business. They're not going to go on vacation with this money, they're going to pay the hundreds of employees that they work when the time comes. Not supporting this is not supporting our city. I don't know how individuals can sleep at night in not wanting to support the backbone of Oceanside, which is our small businesses.
We have a motion in a second, please vote. Which is authorization to award a contract in a little over 16 million for the construction of the lower recycled water package and a whole bunch of other little things that go with it.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Council, Lindsey Leahy with the Water Utilities Department, here to discuss lower recycled water conveyance phase one, award of contract. Tonight, staff recommends award of contract in the amount of $16,491,491 to Granite Construction Company for the construction of lower recycled water phase one conveyance project. Additionally, staff recommends authorizing the city engineer to execute change orders up to a total of 10% of the original contract value, and finally, approve a professional services agreement with Infrastructure Engineering Corporation in an amount not to exceed $2,391,701 for construction management and inspection services. As a background, council has given the Water Utilities Department a goal to increase 50%, our local supply of water to 50% by the year of 2030. Currently, we're at a local supply of 11%. With the completion of the recycled water projects before you tonight, as well as pure water Oceanside, we should be at over 34 or 33% of a local supply anticipated to be completed around the time of 2023. By the year of 2030, we anticipate to be over 56% of local supply of water within the city. In December of 2015, staff completed a recycled water master plan identifying how to distribute recycled water within the city and where the pipeline should go. August of 2016, staff awarded a contract to DUDAC to complete a planning study to, and a further design of the upper and lower recycled water systems. In May of 2018, DUDAC completed that planning study and began the design of the lower system, and shortly thereafter, the upper system. In October of 2019, Planning Commission issued a conditional use permit and certified the PEIR addendum number three, PEIR being Programmatic Environmental Impact Report, for the lower recycled water program, as well as the recycled water program as a whole. In November of 2019, council approved plans and specifications and authorized staff to go out and receive bids. In December of 2019, council certified the Programmatic Environmental Impact Report, addendum number three, specific to the recycled water program here today. January 20, January of 2020, staff advertised the project for bid, and in February of 2020, staff opened. January of 2020, staff advertised the project for bid, and in February of 2020, staff opened bids. There are multiple phases to this recycled water program. There's a lower Phase 1, which brings the recycled water distribution system from our centrally located San Luis Rey facility down essentially El Camino Real to the Fire Mountain area. This will be our southern backbone of the recycled water system. The upper system is our northern backbone, which will bring the pipeline from San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility to South Moro Hills. Lower Phase 2 is a branch that heads west down Oceanside Boulevard towards the Rancho del Oro area and will stem off of our lower Phase 1 system. All of these systems include conveyance projects as well as reservoir and pump station projects to better align with contractors' specialities and competencies. The item here before you is lower Phase L 1.1, which is the lower conveyance project. Paired with this project tonight is a portion of our Pure Water Oceanside Pipeline. As you've seen in other presentations, our Phase 1 for Pure Water Oceanside was for the design. Phase 2 consists of five separate construction projects. The item here before you tonight also includes Phase 2B 0.1 for Pure Water Oceanside, which is the conveyance pipeline from San Luis Rey to Paula Road. This shows an overview of the alignment of pipeline for the lower recycled water Phase 1 conveyance. At the upper side of the image, you can see North River Road. At the end of that, on the far left end, is where the approximate locations of our San Luis Rey Water Reclamation Facility are located. The pipeline heads south down Douglas, eventually getting to El Camino Real, where it turns west down Fire Mountain and heads to our current, we currently have a water reservoir at that site, and will in the future have a recycled water reservoir in Fire Mountain. The highlighted red portion identifies the parallel pipeline for Pure Water Oceanside and part of why the items are combined tonight. This is a closer look at the alignment that has the parallel recycled water as well as Pure Water Oceanside pipelines. The importance of pairing these together was more specifically because of the river crossing across the San Luis Rey River. In order to take advantage of economies of scale as well as minimize impacts to the community and traffic impacts, we wanted to award this into one contract to have the shortest amount of time on the streets there and have one contractor do both of the river The engineer's estimate for this project was 19,125,600. We received nine bids and publicly opened them on February 27th. Granite Construction was our apparent low bidder at 16,491,491. Staff did receive a bid protest from M&amp;N Construction on five points. The first point being inadequate bidder signature. Staff received a letter from Granite Construction's Board of Directors identifying that their signatory, John Boyes, had the authority to make a binding agreement up to 75 million dollars without a secondary approval. This was provided with their bid. The second item was disadvantaged business good faith effort. A disadvantaged business good faith effort is typically a 30-day effort for contracts to be advertised to small businesses and disadvantaged businesses. This was met by the city, it was a requirement of the city, and it is expected that construction companies as well and general contractors as well attempt to place this effort. This effort was met by Granite Construction and the effort was documented. In addition to that, there was a goal to have 8% of the subcontracted work for this project to be disadvantaged businesses. This is not a requirement, it's only a goal. Granite has met that minimum 8% or that 8% goal. The third item was inadequate project experience. Granite has listed and did list in their bid five recent and relevant projects with similar scope and contract value. Number four was the subcontractor's compliance forms that were not submitted. These forms are only required by prime contractors and not require, a requirement of subcontractors. And finally, the fifth item was failure to properly initial bid price changes. Granite had provided backup that there were two signatories authorized to make bid changes on the bid schedule at the day of bidding. They have confirmed that both employees or both were verified employees of Granite Construction. Staff and the city attorney's office have reviewed and issued a response, which was also included with the staff report. Staff finds that no material reason to reject Granite's bid. With that, staff recommends that Granite is the lowest responsive and responsible bidder. For construction management, RFPs were posted and two proposals were received and evaluated, one from Infrastructure Engineering Corporation, the second from Gannett Fleming. Interviews of both firms were conducted on March 9th, and Infrastructure Engineering Corporation was ranked the highest based on qualifications. The anticipated schedule moving forward would be a contract award tonight, with a notice to proceed in the next coming weeks, potentially as soon as next week depending on schedules, with mobilization in May. There is a pure water pipeline completion milestone as part of this contract. There's the bigger picture of the pure water project, so the pipeline completion date for this contract would be July 1st of 2021. I wanted to also include that the overall operational completion deadline for the pure water program is based off of SB 606 of January 1st, 2022. So in order for the contractor to complete the construction and have the treatment plant in operation, we need the pipelines to be in place first. So that's why there's a six-month difference between the two deadlines and the milestones. Finally, the overall lower recycled water conveyance pipeline contract is scheduled to be complete in March of 2022. The project bid was divided into two separate bid schedules based on the project scopes. Bid Schedule A was our lower recycled water Phase 1 conveyance, with Bid Schedule B being our Pure Water Oceanside Phase 2B1 conveyance. Bid Schedule A for recycled water, currently that account has 12.1 million dollars available with future appropriations of 2.7 and 8.4 million dollars scheduled in coming budget allocations. A total, the total estimated construction cost of 16.68 million dollars is scheduled for this bid schedule and specifically for recycled water. The construction management scope of work was separated proportionately to the bid costs of both projects. With that, there would be approximately 6.5 million dollars remaining available for the additional projects in this, in the lower Phase 1 components. For Bid Schedule B, Pure Water Oceanside, there's currently an available balance of 4 million dollars with future appropriations during the budget process of 41.5 million dollars and 14.98 million dollars respectively over the next two years. The total amount of construction costs allocated to Pure Water Oceanside conveyance Phase 1 is 3.8 million dollars with a remaining balance available for other projects, components of 56.75 million. The funding sources for both the recycled water as well as the Pure Water Oceanside project align together. Both projects were selected to receive WIFIA loans through the Environmental Protection Agency of a combined total of 51.4 million dollars. Both have individually received and been awarded integrated regional water management grants of 1.45 million dollars for the lower recycled and 3.115 million for the Pure Water Oceanside project. Additionally, staff has submitted and is waiting to hear back on Bureau of Reclamation win grants for both projects. And finally, any other costs of projects would come from user rates and development fees. And I want to point out that any grants that are received would directly offset the amounts of funding needed from our FAR balance, our fixed asset replacement fund balance. With that, staff recommends award of contract in the amount of 16,491,491 to Granite Construction for the construction of lower recycled water Phase 1 conveyance. Authorize the city engineer to execute change orders up to a total of 10% of the original contract value, and approve a professional services agreement with Infrastructure Engineering Corporation in an amount not to exceed 2,391,701 for construction management and inspection services. And I'm available for any questions.
Mr. Navarro, do we have public?
No public on this item.
I have a question, the San Luis Rey River crossing, are the pipes going to be hung off the bridge or underground?
They're going to be underground, it's going to be a horizontal directional drill under the river.
Thank you.
Yes.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. This is a very critical water project, and I'm very proud that we're doing this. It is an enterprise fund, and this will ensure the integrity of our water supply as well as ensure the costs of water will remain consistent and stable in the future. So I'm going to go ahead and move approval of staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Feller?
The, it's very enlightening to me and kind of sometimes overwhelming how much our staff knows and does. I'm confident in the Water Utilities Department. Their plans, their efforts, it's just a kind of a killer can-do attitude to get things done, and it's all for our community, so I appreciate all of that. And commend the employees that have spent hours, probably going to school to be able to say all those words, and then, and then on top of that, build something out of it. The one question I had tagging on Peter was the, how deep do you have to go to be out of the river bottom?
Deputy Mayor Feller, City Council, I don't have the exact depth on the top of my head, I can send those to you, but it's fairly deep. I think the overall length of pipe that's crossing the river is over like 1,200 feet, so it has to actually go deeper in order to come back up, so if that gives any sort of comparison, but I can get that number for you.
Thanks, I second.
Second, please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Mr. Navarro, we have items on 21?
On item number 21, council received 20 emails and two voice messages before the start of the council meeting, however, one email did just come in. Out of those emails, we had a total of six that wanted to be read into the record. Our first comment is from Tom Glasser. His comment is, "Please give an update on the quiet safety zone project, including what effect, if any, the coronavirus has had on it." Thank you, Tom Glasser. Our second public comment is from Ira Hetch, I believe that's how you pronounce the last name, I apologize. His comment is, "As a slip renter at the harbor, I protest the cities violating the contractual rights of non-living borders to use their boats to shelter in place three nights weekly without reducing monthly rental fees. This goes well beyond the county's mandate preventing boats leaving or entering the harbor for recreational purposes." Ira Hetch. Our third public comment is from Kristoff Pavik. "Oceanside Harbor is used as a de facto safe parking lot by many vehicle dwellers. Some are allowed to overnight for years, while others are made to leave by the police for no discernible reason. Please consider designating Oceanside Harbor an official, safe parking lot for all vehicle dwellers, or publicly identify the criteria to benefit from this unofficial program for the homeless and frugal travelers alike." Our fourth public comment is from Arlene Hammerschmidt. "Straight-up abuse of power again. Limiting public comment to 50 words read by city clerk in 15 minutes on any agenda item does not equate to LWV recommendation. Provide for actual comment to be read at the meeting and for telephone message to be played. Is council afraid?" Our fifth public comment is from Eric McGill. "I'm Eric McGill, and I grew up in Oceanside. The COVID crisis is leading to an economic crisis rivaling the Great Depression, with millions of people out of work and unable to pay for basic needs such as housing. Oceanside must take a stand and cancel rents and mortgages and enact a ban on accumulation of debt. No one should be forced out of their homes because of a pandemic." Eric McGill. Our sixth and final public comment is from Katrina Priest. She sent about three pages of text, so I'll only read the first 50 words or so. "Dear city council members, I am hopeful that as a Oceanside resident and very busy middle school teacher, that my public comment will be read out loud so that members of the viewing public would also hear my concerns. At the March 25th city council meeting, item 23 regarding the marijuana delivery service was postponed." And that concludes the public comment, but just real quickly, the city clerk's office received some feedback from the Planning Commission as well as City Planner Jeff Hunt on how well this policy went over at the Planning Commission, and it was about as welcomed as me having a coffin fit in the middle of a supermarket. So the city clerk department, based on feedback from the commissioners and Mr. Hunt and myself as well as members of the public, we will be revising this plan a little bit more, especially because we based this off the League of Women Voters letter. It looked good on paper, but in practice, it wasn't really practical for our staff to count 50 words on each public comment. I feel our time could be well-spent answering public records requests and other services. Thank you.
Do we have any general council member comments? Councilmember Keine?
Just want to say thank you, Zeb. I know you've been working extremely hard with limited staff, I'm very supportive of what you've been doing, and going forward, how you best feel that we can address and get public comment in here and how we can do that successfully, and I will support actions you take in the future. So thank you again for your hard work in this unprecedented time of not, being that people aren't able to come in, and we're just trying to do the best we can, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Thank you. I wanted to give the updates for today. We now have 2,491 positives, confirmed positive tests, and that's an increase by 57. We have now 611 in terms of hospitalizations, that's an increase of 19. ICUs, we now have 206, that's an increase of seven. Deaths, we have 96, that's an increase of nine. And for Oceanside, yes, we have 56, that's an increase of three. I was hoping we would stay steady, but we're still going up. Okay? And I just want to thank all the residents in Oceanside. I know it's very, very difficult to stay home, that's what we've been asking people to do. It's, what has been given credit for how well we're doing is not just the social distancing, that's actually the exception to the general rule of staying home. And so I really, except for the essential workers, and my hat goes off to all our essential workers, the hospital workers, especially the grocery workers, who are out there when we don't have to be, and they are the ones that are being put in these really dangerous situations. And I really appreciate all the special hours that our groceries have and some of our pharmacies have created for our, and Costco as well, even though Costco's not within Oceanside, for our vulnerable populations as well as our seniors. Very, very happy that you were able to do that, and looking forward to keeping, you know, getting the numbers to go down as we progress, and to be able to satisfy both the federal requirements to be able to lift the stay-at-home orders as well as the state guidelines for the stay-at-home orders. Basically, that is where the power is actually, at the governor, at the state level. The county's powers are only what is given by at the state level, and so while it's an interesting dialogue to say, talk about our rights, we're actually talking about the health and safety of our residents. This is really a war within our borders, a domestic war, and, you know, this is what we're being asked to do, stay at home, stay in place, and I want to thank everyone for doing that because you are helping to save lives. Thank you.
And with that, we'll adjourn to a workshop on 2 o'clock Wednesday, April 29th regarding the budget.